At this time, we're gonna have board recognitions. I'm handing the podium over to you, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to invite the board to come forward, please.
And I would like to invite Dr. Douglas Hendricks, Dr. Ralph Simpson-Simpson, Dr. Keith Colbert, to please come forward and join the board down front. I now invite Ms. Audrey Hamilton, Executive Director of School Nutrition, and the members of her leadership team to come forward to join the board. And now, most importantly, I invite those cafeteria managers who are with us in the audience tonight, please stand and join us down front. from across the state with certificates of achievement in four categories: 3% increase in school breakfast participation, consistently high breakfast participation, 3% increase in school lunch participation, and consistently high lunch participation. A total of 30 Clayton County Public Schools earned 39 awards this year. This number includes 15 elementary school programs, seven middle school programs, and eight high school programs. Fifteen schools were honored for consistently high breakfast participation, while 14 awards were received for achieving a 3% in school lunch participation, that being a 3% increase. Seven schools received recognition in more than one category. It should be noted that two nutrition programs received honors in three different categories. M.D. Roberts Middle School of the Arts, under the leadership of Kwan Zeta Marshall, earned awards for consistently high breakfast participation, consistently high lunch participation, and increasing school breakfast participation by 3%. Riverdale High School, under the leadership of Angela Christopher, earned awards for increasing school breakfast participation by 3%, consistently high lunch participation, and increasing school lunch participation by 3%. There were other nutrition schools, programs, actually five, that were honored in two categories: Arnold Elementary School, under Han Annie Holmes; Callaway Elementary School, under Chameka McGee; Monday's Mill Middle School, under Latonya Watch; Hunt-Northcut Elementary School, under Chikaleh Yandrea Hassan, I hope I got that right; and Rivers Edge Elementary School, under Dakara Avery. It is important to note that in the face of increasing prices for food and supplies, not to forget their availability, these nutrition programs guided by the professionals that are seen standing here with the board and in our audience have achieved a consistently high performance in support of our efforts to maintain consistently high student success in our classrooms, and we congratulate them. And now, the picture. Now, before the board sits down, I'm going to call Ms. Shakara Rice up for a special presentation.
Good evening. Dr. Smith, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Straker, Board Chair, Ms. Baker, Assistant Board Chair, we would like to announce that we will continue our, we've been noticed for this school year. Each month, an employee will be recognized for going above and beyond the call of duty. We're also proud to announce that thanks to a new partner, Reed's Automotive, we also have, we will receive two $100 gift cards for two students who have been noticed as well. So this evening, those two students, yes, they will receive a $100 gift card. Tonight, we will recognize two of our student presenters who presented at the First Annual Family Engagement Conference, and that student tonight is Mr. Judah Whaley. He will be our first recipient of our student you've been noticed. So come on down, Mr. Whaley, with your mom, to get your $100 gift card. And he received so many accolades for an amazing presentation at our First Annual Family Engagement Conference. Thanks again, Mr. Whaley. Mrs. Whaley, would you like to come down? And our next presenter, well, our second student presenter was Ms. Reagan Washington. She's not here with us tonight, but she's a Norclayton Middle School scholar as well. So, thank you. And I believe Mr. Straker will be our first pull for the employee you've been noticed. Now, this year, our you've been noticed recipients, each month, they will receive a $500 check to do whatever it is they would like to do with that $500. So, Mr. Straker, please do us the honors. Yes. And we all know that Marcus consistently goes above and beyond the call of duty. So that's a great pull, Mr. Straker. So, thank you so very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I'm going to do the roll call. Just give me one second.
Present.
District 2, Mark Christmas.
President.
District 3, Dr. Jesse Goree.
Present.
District 4, Ms. Victoria Williams.
Present.
District 5, Dr. Dee Haney.
Present.
Ms. Mary Baker's absent today. District 7, Ms. Sabrina Hill.
Present.
District 8, Ms. Joy Tellis Cooper.
Present.
And District 9 is myself, Ben Straker. Superintendent, Dr. Anthony Smith.
Present.
Senior Deputy Superintendent, I believe he's absent, Dr. Hendricks. Attorney, Clem Doyle.
Present.
Board Liaison, Kim Blackwell.
Blackwood, I'm sorry.
Assistant to the Superintendent, Ms. Alicia Battle. Assistant to Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Dawn Bliles. She's absent, okay. I have a new intern that has started with the board, and her name is Edith Perez. Is Edith here? If Edith would come out here and wave to the crowd for us. Right. And Edith is joining us. Today's her first day. Everybody is going to notice how articulate and organized she is, and she'll definitely be concentrating on exposing us a little more on social media. So you should start seeing Dr. Smith and then me, you know, and the rest of the board members just as much. We also have Mr. Adrian Partita. If you could say your, pronounce your last name for me. Partita, right. So Adrian Partita. So these are our all-star interns. I'm now going to read the ethics statement. "In accordance with Board Policy BH, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of such conflicts. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict with respect to any matter scheduled to come before the board at this meeting during on our proposed agenda? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict and refrain from participation in the matter involved." We now will move into public participation. I think I have four different individuals that will be speaking this evening. Before they speak, I will read a little disclaimer here. The Clayton County Board of Education welcomes public participation and will hear any interested individual pursuant to the guideline outlined policy, BCBI. Members of the public will not be allowed to discuss individual personnel issues or confidential student matters. Speakers must identify themselves and topics before speaking. Speakers will be given three minutes to speak, and time may not be yielded from one speaker to another. Board members will not respond to comments from speakers. The chairman may respond as appropriate. Issues requiring possible action by the board may be added to future agendas. Issues that may need to be addressed by the administration will be duly noted. Abuse of language and/or personnel attacks will not be permitted. Before we move on with public participation, last week, we had a presentation from our committee leader on changing the name of one of our buildings, and that was sparked by an individual that came up during public participation, and it proves that we listen. So for everybody that's out there and everybody that's watching, we do pay attention when you come up here, and we welcome individuals to come up here and express, you know, the concerns that they have. My first speaker for this evening is going to be Maria Marino. Good evening, Ms. Marino.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Maria Marino, and I'm a parent of a student at Unidos. The last two years have been challenging for us, yet parents have still hung in there, thanks in large part to the amazing educators at Unidos. Thank you all for all you do for our children. I have appeared before this board throughout the past school year to raise concerns about inequities and irregularities. I speak as the voice of parents who feel ignored, parents who have had to bow their heads and abide by a one-person approach. This community often feels voiceless, yet administrations must answer to parents and to the board when policies are not in compliance. Advocating for children's well-being and education is not terrorizing staff or attacking administration. It is our right and our duty as parents. Unidos serves a majority immigrant community, and in today's climate, our families already carry fear and uncertainty. Yet, given the opportunity, they do not waver. They show up, they volunteer, and support their children's education. That is true commitment. And so, we ask, why do we take the time to complete Title I and other school surveys if they fall on deaf ears? Parents and staff provide thoughtful input because they care. Yet, when it is ignored, it erodes trust, discourages engagement, and defeats the very purpose of these tools. As the superintendent calls on parents to be accountable, we ask, are we holding this administration accountable for its actions? Parents who stand up for their children are too often treated as a problem instead of partners. This has gone as far as violating student rights and due process. Parent-student lunches were eliminated just at the beginning of this year. One of the few ways parents could connect with their children. Some events are now invite-only when administration decides where they're the ones that decide which parents can participate. This creates exclusion and equity and violates the family engagement plan. We are not asking for special treatment. We are asking for compliance, equity, and inclusion. All families must be welcomed, heard, and valued. Funding comes with responsibility. Let's honor it for every family at Unidos. No parent should be left out. Exclusion is not optional. It's the law. We are not asking for favors. We are asking for fairness, equity, and respect. I urge this board tonight to take immediate action to restore fairness, ensure proper communication, and give parents the respect and voice they deserve.
Thank you, Ms. Marino.
And we're looking for solutions to work with the board.
What was that, ma'am?
We want solutions.
You got it. You got it. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Christina MacLeod. Christina is... Ms. Christina MacLeod. Going once. Oh, she is. Okay, I didn't, I didn't, I'm sorry about How are you today, ma'am? That's good.
Good evening. My name is Christina McCullough, and I'm the founder of Shine, a nonprofit supporting children with autism and their families. I'm also the mother of two children with autism. Tonight, I'm asking the board to require cameras in all special needs classrooms with unrestricted access to view and save the footage. Our children are among the most vulnerable in our schools, and many cannot fully communicate when something goes wrong. Cameras are not about mistrust. They are about safety, accountability, and a peace of mind. They protect students, the teachers, and build trust between the families and the schools. When situations arise, video provides the truth. This ensures our children's dignity and safety while also protecting staff from false accusations. Most importantly, cameras give a voice to the children who cannot speak for themselves, and I urge you to prioritize transparency and safety by making cameras mandatory in every special needs classroom with full parental access. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Is Ms. Whitney Honeywood? Okay. All right. Next person up is Ms. Linda Jones. Ms. Linda Jones. Where are you, Ms. Jones? There you go. Take your time, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Jones. I'm the president of the Progressive Seniors Organization. Progressive Seniors is a group of mature, active, positive women. We're 60 years and older. Our community outreach includes donating school supplies to young students at Clayton County schools. However, we've been disappointed a few years in a row. When we are told that someone will meet us the first week at designated schools, we expect to see or hear from them on time. Of course, that's not happening, and we're disappointed because we believe that professionalism should be at the forefront of appropriate-minded individuals. Professionalism should be at the forefront of their minds. A small group of about seven senior citizen women, named the Progressive Seniors, have collaborated with community partners and donated and donated school supplies to Clayton County schools over the last six or seven years. Schools included Lily East Sudo Elementary two times, McGarrett, Lake City, Church Street, Anderson, and Smith Elementary. This year, donations totaling about $1,000 were donated to second-grade students at Lily East Sudo Elementary School in Jonesburg, Georgia. Also, as a community advocate, I have participated in classroom reading days, made financial donation to Jonesburg High School Band, and was a speaker at Anderson Elementary Career Day. When senior citizens and other community organizations implement positive action plans, such as donating time, services, or funds to schools, I feel they should be applauded, not disregarded, especially when board members or education leaders invite and agree to participate for a need. Although we've experienced some disappointments over the years, the Progressive Seniors hope to continue encouraging elementary students with our annual back-to-school campaigns. Dr. Goree, I would like to thank you for accepting my telephone calls and having a positive conversation with me responding to our concerns. It shows a willingness to cooperate with relatable organizations in Clayton County. And I do have some information I'd like to share with you about our organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you for everything that you do. Okay, that concludes public participation for this evening. We now will move into the executive session recommendations. And with that being said, I now hand the podium over to Dr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff and community, I would like for the board to consider some recommendations tonight. First, for the position of principal at Perry Career Academy. And my recommendation is for Dr. Cynthia Freeman Smalls.
Good deal. Mr. Christmas?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for Dr. Cynthia Freeman Smalls to be the principal of the Perry Career Center.
Good deal. Can I get a second?
I second.
Ms. Goree, you would second it? Okay. Good deal. Okay, the motion has been made and properly seconded. Can I get a vote? It's unanimous.
Thank you, board members. Dr. Freeman Smalls, if you're present, please stand and be recognized and congratulated. Thank you, board. I would also like the board to consider for the position of principal at Church Street Elementary, Dr. Francis Thomas.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Goree?
Mr. Chairman and Dr. Smith, I move that we accept the recommendation of Dr. Francis Thomas as the principal of the Church Street Elementary School.
Mr. Christmas? The motion has been made and properly seconded. Can I get a vote? It's unanimous.
Congratulations, Dr. Thomas. Please stand and be recognized, and congratulations. Thank you, board members. And if you would, please stick around. The board would like to take a picture with all appointees tonight. I also have another recommendation, board, that I would like for you to consider for the position of assistant principal at East Clayton Elementary for Ms. Brandy Roman.
Ms. Joy Teles Cooper?
I move that we accept the recommendation of the superintendent for Ms. Brandy Roman as the assistant principal at East Clayton Elementary.
And I'm going to second that. The motion has been made and properly seconded. Can I get a vote? It's unanimous.
Thank you, board. Congratulations, Ms. Roman. Please stand and be recognized, and congratulations. All right. I have one final recommendation. I would like for the board to consider for the position of high school assistant superintendent, Dr. Eldrick Horton, who is serving in the role of acting assistant superintendent for high schools.
Yes.
Ms. Goree?
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation of Dr. Eldrick Horton as the high school assistant superintendent.
The motion has been made, and I need a second?
Second.
Who's the second? Jasmine, Ms. Bowes? Good deal. The motion has been made and properly seconded. Can I get a vote? It's unanimous.
Thank you so much, board. Congratulations, Dr. Horton. Please stand and be recognized, sir.
If I could quickly get all of you to step down here so we can take our photo, and we do have other executive session recommendations. Hey, Dr. Smith, I'm going to let you finish with your recommendations.
I would like for the board to consider the recommendations of the tribunal panel for case number...
2025. Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes. I move that we uphold the decision of the tribunal board on tribunal 2025-2026-01.
Ms. Hill?
I second the motion.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Can I get a vote? You got one, two, three, four. You got that, Ms. Battle? And you have four opposed, so... What was that? Right. Opposing votes is four, the ones, right. So we got four opposed, right? All right, so I think the motion drops dead there, and the tribunal is irrelevant now, right? What was that?
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Okay. Thank you very much, board members, for... You have, you documented it? Good.
Those are all of my recommendations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, Dr. Smith. We now have the announcements.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board and superintendent. I am Morgan McLean, an eighth-grade student at Rexton Middle School.
And I am Luis Alvarez, a seventh-grade student attending Rexton Middle. We have the pleasure of sharing this month's board announcement.
September is National...
Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board and superintendent. I am Morgan McLean, an eighth-grade student at Rexton Middle.
And I am Luis Alvarez, a seventh-grade student attending Rexton Middle. We have the pleasure of sharing this month's board announcement.
September is National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, National Sickle Cell Awareness Month, and National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. It is also home to Grandparents' Day and U.S. Constitution Day.
The District will observe Hispanic Heritage Month beginning Monday, September 15th, and continuing through Wednesday, October 15th. The theme for this year's observance is collective heritage, honoring the past, inspiring the future. Numerous activities have been scheduled throughout the district during the month in recognition of this event.
Clayton County Public Schools, in partnership with Clayton County Public Libraries, invites you to celebrate Library Card Sign-up Month. This year's theme, One Card Endless Possibilities, is a reminder that libraries are for everyone, no matter your age, background, or goals. CCPS students can request a digital public library card by logging into ClassLink and visiting tinyurl.com-publiclibrarycard.
A series of curriculum nights have been established for students and their families. On the following schedule, elementary school sessions will take place on Thursday, September 11th. Middle school sessions will take place on Thursday, September 18th. And high school sessions will take place on Thursday, September 25th. All curriculum night sessions will begin at 5:00 p.m., continue to 7:00 p.m.
Parents are invited to attend a virtual school choice fair on Saturday, September 13th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Elementary programs will be the focus at 9:00 a.m. Middle school programs will be the focus at 10:00 a.m. And high school programs at 11:00 a.m. The fair will also serve as a meet-and-greet opportunity to engage with school and program administrators and teachers. More information will be forthcoming. The district will hold a Let's Talk Literacy event on Tuesday, September 23rd, to begin at 5:30 p.m. Please check the district's website for more details related to the special event.
The Eighth Annual Mental Health Awareness 5K will take place on Saturday, September 27th, at the St. Thomas Pavilion of the Clayton County International Park, beginning at 9:00 a.m. The theme for this year's walk is Walk, Run, Thrive, because wellness is a journey, not a finish line. For more information, please email the district's Department of Student Behavioral Health.
The September Boardwork Session is scheduled for Monday, September 29th, at the Performing Arts Center in Jonesburg. The meeting will begin at 6:00 p.m.
The October Board Meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 6th, at the Performing Arts Center in Jonesburg. The meeting will begin at 6:00 p.m.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes tonight's announcements. Thank you.
I want to thank our communications team for doing an extraordinary job, and I want to thank the students and staff at Elite Scholars for participating. But I also want to thank two individuals that are closely connected to Clayton County Public Schools. I want to thank our very own Dr. Ralph Simpson, his son, who plays Major League Baseball for the Tampa Bay Rays. He was featured in the top 10 Plays of the Day on SportsCenter on ESPN last week. So we want to send out a big congratulations to Chairman Simpson and let him know that we're extremely proud. I also want to recognize another individual who is closely connected with Clayton County Public Schools. Her father is our very own athletic director, Mr. Gary Townsend, and her sister is also a science teacher and a tennis and swim coach at Marlboro High School. And the person I'm referring to is Taylor Townsend, who's appearing in the U.S. Open.
Go TT!
And as of today, she has won in the women's doubles and will be advancing for the finals on Friday. So we want to congratulate Taylor, but we also want to let Taylor know how much we appreciate how she represented herself, her family, and this community during what we consider to be a little controversy at the U.S. Open. So thank you, thank you, Taylor. We congratulate you, and we are extremely proud of you. Thank you, Mr. Townsend, and Simone, and the entire Townsend family. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You got it.
Mr. Chairman, before you move on, can I take a moment of personal...
Go for it. Does everybody need a personal moment?
I just need to make one because, I mean, I salute you. You are a gentleman of CCPS. I want to salute Dr. Smith and all of those men that stood in front of the Performing Arts Center yesterday. And I want to salute men for handling their business in Clayton County Public Schools. Employee at Charles Drew, Mr. Brooks, started it off with a viral post on, I guess it was Instagram, and it has continued. I was so proud to see all of those men stand out there yesterday, dressed up, looking appropriately, and just, I'm just so proud of you. So I'm going to issue a challenge now. Since I have an annual girls' conference, can the men handle their business and have a men's conference? Or boys, whatever we want to say? Because I really like the fact of seeing men be in the leadership role. Can I issue that challenge to you and Mr. Chairman there?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Christmas, don't try to hide out. That's a Christmas initiative right there.
Thank you, Dr. Goree, for the acknowledgement. I want to thank the incredible male educators here in Clayton County. I want the female educators across the metro Atlanta area to take notice that we have some extremely professional and good-looking men. So you might want to come and join our team here in Clayton County. You might find your future husband. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let's remember the stats here. The men, men make up 26% nationwide of the public school system. And when you talk specifically about the black and Hispanic teachers, we only make up 1.5%. So the district, you know, under Dr. Smith, and he's done a great job at this, and Ms. Albritton, we definitely need to keep up the recruiting because representation matters. Thank you. All right. Approval of the minutes. I know, Ms. Goree, you had some changes in one of the minutes. Was it the board meeting or the work session?
It was... Anyway, it's been corrected.
It's been corrected.
Corrected, I just needed my...
All right. Does anybody else need any changes to the minutes? Seeing none, we'll now move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda comprises of financial report, SPOS revenue report, purchasing report, budget amendments, SPOS construction report, capital to purchasing report, and the personnel change-changes report. Is there any item that needs to be pulled, board members? Seeing none, we'll now vote on the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda? I got Ms. Goree, and I got Mr. Christmas. So Ms. Goree has made... Go ahead.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
And Ms... Okay, the motion has been made and properly seconded. Can I get a vote for the consent agenda? It's unanimous. We now will move on to the business agenda. That's the vote for tonight. We have the district annual Godot CTAE budget. Is there any discussion that's needed before we move on with that vote? Seeing none, can I get a motion for the district annual Godot CTAE budget?
So moved.
Okay, I got Ms. Bowes. And who's the second? All right. And I got Ms. Hill. So Ms. Bowes has made the motion. Ms. Hill has seconded the motion. Can I get a vote? Okay. The vote is unanimous, so it passes. The time now is 6:44, and this meeting is adjourned.